Good evening and welcome to the Dumfries Town Council Meeting. As your mayor and your presiding officer, my role under the town charter, Dumfries rules the procedures and the Roberts rules of orders ensure that we have an orderly process of business and maintain decorum so that all participants, our council, our staff and the public can be heard respectfully and fairly. To this end, please note the following requirements which apply equally to the public as well as our council and those of us on this dais. We ask that all comments be made directed to the mayor who's the chair of the meeting. No comments should be directed to individual members of staff or members of the public. Side conversations, we ask that you whisper and cross-talk. That everything be audible so it can be a part of our official record. That all your electronic devices, please be silent. Texts and emails and messages related to the public business matters during this meeting are subject to FOIA and should be avoided. We ask that no one speak while another person has the floor. Interruptions will be ruled out of order. Council members will be recognized by the chair before speaking. We ask that council members speak up to two minutes on any item with a combined total of no more than 10 minutes. We ask that members of the public are allotted three minutes to speak during our citizen comment or our public hearing unless it's otherwise changed by a majority vote of council prior to the start of this meeting. We say that during our citizen comment time, that council members will not respond directly to the speakers. Our responses or clarification or any follow-up remarks may be offered later during a designated council comment time when they will reach out. Any member ruled out of order must yield the floor immediately unless the ruling is appealed by the council in accordance with our Roberts rules. We ask that all clapping, yelling or other outbursts not be permitted unless invited by the presiding officer. Disrupted behavior may result in the removal from the meeting and if necessary expulsion from the remaining of the session. Speakers who exceed the allotted time or violate decorum may have their microphone silenced. Council directions to staff is given collectively through the town, from the town council to the town manager. And we ask that all political commentary or attempts to draw staff and members on this dais into political commentary are inappropriate and we ask that you keep our staff neutral and professional. These rules are designed to protect the rights of all participants, ensure compliance with our laws and keep our meetings efficient, respectful and productive. Thank you. To that sense, I would now officially ask the clerk to call for the roll.
Councilmember Peterson?
Present.
Councilmember Pete?
Here.
Councilmember Fields?
Here.
Councilmember Young?
Here.
Chair Proton Miles?
Present.
Vice Mayor Nickerson?
Yes.
Mayor Wood?
I am present.
Thank you.
Our, I think the pastor got stuck in traffic because there was a lot of traffic. So we will, you know what, I'm going to ask Councilman Fields to open us up this morning. As you were, as they say, be always ready, right? Let us pray. Lord, I want to thank you for this evening as we come in upon our council meeting. We ask that you bless us throughout this meeting. Let our hearts and minds be filled with nothing but the business of the town and for our people. In these words, we ask in your name, amen. All right, would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, please be seated. Next on the addenda, addenda, agenda is the adoption of the agenda. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask that we remove off the consent agenda the consideration of additional legislation to our legislative agenda. And I'm gonna move that down to D and action items for discussion on the skill and gray games. All right. Mayor? Yes. Could we also amend, being that this is the only meeting we've had this month, to have council comments, please? Okay, so also to have council comments. All right, any other changes or additions to the agenda? All right, seeing none.
I motion that we adopt the agenda as amended.
It's been properly motioned and second. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call for the question.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pete?
Yes.
Councilmember Fields?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Chair Proton Miles?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nickerson?
Yes.
Mayor Wood?
Yes.
That motion's passed.
All right, the agenda has been adopted. First is a recognition of the graduates of the Legacy Builders Program. This was a program for those who didn't participate this go around was about economic mobility, is about wills, trusts and insurance. And we had a cohort of citizens and residents who went through, some showed up faithfully every week to the council chambers. So tonight is one of those proud moments for us because what we're not recognizing here is just participation in the program. It's, we recognize their courage, their commitment and their community leadership. So over the past eight weeks, every single person that was in the Legacy Builders cohort made a decision, a decision to prepare, to protect their loved ones and to take control of their future. And I want to say this clearly, this is what economic mobility really looks like. It's not, it's not only jobs, it's not only income, it's not only opportunity, it's planning, it's protecting, it's documenting, it's building a legacy that will outlive you and that's transformative. I'm incredibly proud of the dedication shown by each of the participants, some here and some are watching online who couldn't make it. Your questions over the past eight weeks, your engagement, your willingness to learn, it all mattered. And you set the foundation for something powerful in our town. But tonight isn't just about the participants, it's also about the people who made this possible. To our class leaders, to the estate planning attorneys who volunteered their time, they didn't get paid to show up, they came here, to our financial educators, our insurance experts, a couple of weeks, some of them flew in from out of town. And everyone who poured their time and expertise in this series, we say thank you. You didn't just teach a class, you planted seeds that will grow into the families of this community for generations. And so to the partners who walked alongside us each week, thank you for committing to the people of Dumfries. And a heartfelt thank you to the African American Mayor Association for funding this vision, giving us the grant and believing in the importance of estate planning and economic mobility in communities like ours, especially underserved communities. Your investment made this program possible, your impact will be seen in every family who represented here tonight. To this cohort who joined us and those who watching, you were our very first Legacy Builders class in the town of Dumfries and so you all have set the bar high. You proved what it looks like when the community decides not just to survive, but to build, to grow and to serve, to carry a future. And if you're watching and thinking, I wish I had joined, don't worry, we still got some funding left and we're not done. We're gonna launch another eight-week series somewhere around the first quarter of 2026 because this works matters. And so with that said, I will, I don't know if you put this by who's here or you just gave me all of them. Okay, all right. So they, all of them read the same, so I just call out names to see kind of who's here. Oh, Legacy Builders, it says protect what matters, builds what lasts and a certificate presentation in recognition of participating in the town of Dumfries Legacy Builders Program. Eight-week journey focused on estate planning, life insurance and building generational wealth awarded on November 18th, 2025. Signed, Mayor Derek Alwood. And the first name is actually, let me turn this page here. It's Christine, Christine Cornell, come on up. I think she gets the prize for perfect attendance in, inside. Y'all can give her a round of applause. I'm standing here while I read all the names, okay? We have, now y'all, forgive me, Alua Kamara, is she here? Okay. We have Darcelle Banks, or is it, yeah, Darcelle Banks. We have Naim Ashad. We have Kiana Rainey. Miranda Snyder. Helena Young. Is she here? Y'all give her a round of applause. Ray Rainey. Ray Rainey, this is yours. We have Michelle Harris. Candace Williams. Ada Funis. Yeah, excuse me if I, Tamika Bechtun. Phillip Bell. Jennifer Washington. Andrea Morsy. Lisa Horn Hughes. Lariel Bog. Faison Bag. Landon Bailey. Nancy Purdy, did I say it right? She has a lot of, Kim Sherrell Smith. We have Nancy Smith. Belzera Love. We have Melanie Barrow. Raja Rainey. Mary Johnson. Audrey Jones. Grafton Walker. Russell Young. Jessie Purdy and Tangela Ennis. Again, this is our first cohort in the, wait, don't stand right here, I'm gonna get you. Our first cohort of our economic mobility, wills, trusts and insurance, and they did all the estate planning. So if y'all want to come in closer. All right, give them another round of applause. If you're watching online, you can come into the front desk and pick up your certificates. Can you pass that down, please? All right. Next on our agenda is the approval of our October 21st and October 28th Town Council minute meetings.
Ms. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the 21st and 28th October.
Second. Can we do those as two separate motions?
No. I will withdraw my motion. So I'd like to first make a motion that we approve the minutes from October 21st, 2025.
Second. All right, it's been motioned and seconded, any discussion? All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk, call for the question on those minutes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pete?
Yes.
Councilmember Fields?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Chair Proton Miles?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nickerson?
Yes.
Mayor Wood?
Yes.
That motion's passed.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the, I'm sorry, for the approval of the minutes for the October 28th, 2025 Town Council Work Session Meeting Minutes.
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded, any discussion? All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk, call for the question on those minutes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pete?
Yes.
Councilmember Fields?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Chair Proton Miles?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nickerson?
Yes.
Mayor Wood?
Yes.
That motion's passed.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the, I'm sorry, for the approval of the minutes for the October 28th, 2025 Town Council Work Session Meeting Minutes.
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded, any discussion? All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call for that question.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pete?
Yes.
Councilmember Fields?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Chair Proton Miles?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nickerson?
Yes.
Mayor Wood?
Abstained, I was not there. I'm absent, okay? All right, next on our agenda is citizen comment period. Are there any citizens signed up to speak tonight?
Let me go get a sheet.
Oh, we gotta get a sheet, hold on. No, she's getting it. Oh, I never turned the page. Well, while she's coming, just to our graduates again, I want to say that your family matters, your legacy matters. Congratulations to you all again. Thank you for showing up week after week. Mr. Cornell, I think you're the hero, I think you were the perfect attendee every week for continuing to choose to invest in your legacy. Let's continue to build Dumfries where every household has a plan, every family has a future they could be proud of and we don't have to pass the hat when somebody passes around, you know what I'm saying? So let's keep putting the work out for this type of work, putting the message out for this type of work. Okay, Madam Clerk, I gave you time.
Okay, I have two people that signed up to speak. The first person is Christie Barcalow.
All right, I am back to finish telling you all about the DAR's mission to find more patriots who were in Dumfries during the Revolutionary War. I am a member of the Daughters of the American Revolution and my committee, the E. Pluribus Unum Committee, that is our mission to find more patriots. Last month, I talked to you a little bit about two of the patriots that we had found, they were African Americans, free African Americans from Dumfries. And today, I'm going to tell you about another free African American from Dumfries. And he was part of a really important mission that happened here in Dumfries. So in September of 1781, that's where I left off last month, the, it was getting close to the end of the war and Washington had decided that he needed to clear the roads in order to get his troops all the way down to Yorktown. And yes, Dumfries was one of those towns that was asked to clear the roads. So I have here, from Washington, on September 12th, 1781, General George Washington ordered Colonel Henry Lee of Leesylvania to use the local Prince William militia and the local residents to improve the roads of the army. Specifically, the militia was tasked with fixing the roads that were impassable from Aquaquan Ferry to Dumfries. The work was described as laborious and fatiguing, but Lee optimistically reported that a good road had been constructed in less than seven days. This rapid action ensured that the Continental and French armies could advance south unhindered to besiege the British in Yorktown. This is really important, that Dumfries residents were part of this siege of Yorktown, we helped to clear the road. And one of those residents, Dumfries residents, his name was Henry Daniel Cole. And when Henry Daniel Cole was just a teenager, and he's a free African American from Dumfries, he joined the war. And I have the writing from his pension papers. And the first question he was asked was, where and where were you born? He says, "I was born in the county of Prince William on the 20th day of February 1763 at a place in the said county called Dumfries." And then he's asked about how he served. It said, "At the time of my service in the war, I was a resident of the county of Prince William where I was born. After the close of the war, I came to Culpeper." And then he's asked, okay, what did you do? So his first tour, he went down to the Roanoke area, but his father was very upset that he had joined the war because he's only a teenager. And his father actually followed him all the way down to Richmond, trying to catch up with his troops and get him to come home and persuade him to come home, but he did not. He stayed in the war for nine months and he was eventually sent to Dumfries, back to his hometown, to help clear the road. Now, do you wonder what happened to him afterwards? Well, he moved to Culpeper. He had a son named Daniel Cole who moved back here to Dumfries and married Betsy Bates, wait a minute, Mary Bates, they had Mary Bates, then they had Marjorie Thomas, then they had Lauren Reed, then they had John Wilmore Porter. And last, Gwen Washington. So our very own Gwen Washington is a descendant.
Thank you for that history lesson, we appreciate it. Who's, who else signed up?
The next person is Tiffany Allm.
Okay, hi, I'm Tiffany Allm and my family and I moved here about 10 years ago from Wisconsin, so forgive my accent. One thing I remember, when we moved to Dumfries, a new area, I, you know, I kept seeing that sign, Wiens Bots, Wiens Bots, and I'm like, what is that? But I just kept seeing it probably 100 times, so I finally took it upon myself to go see what this museum was all about. And I stopped by for a tour and I met Lisa. And then you might know my daughter, Abigail, she interned there archiving their archaeological finds and then she ended up becoming the manager. So of course, I always call myself Dumfries, the Wiens Bots Museum number one volunteer because my daughter manages it. So I've cleaned the house, I've done some landscaping, I've done some classes, I did a cross stitch class and I've done like another wreath making class. So I do all kinds of things there, which is really fun to be able to spend time with my daughter and of course, we know Christie, so. So the latest class, I just wanted to tell you about the latest class because it was super fun. And we had 12 people there. I mean, that, it was really, really cool. And there were people from all over the area that found the class on Eventbrite. So, and I, I mean, I have to tell you, college students came up, a young college student, and it was a young man, which was kind of weird to be coming to a spinning class, but he came and he learned and he was so fun. So, and it was 12 people fighting over the four spinning wheels, trying to get up there to spin the wool and we carted the wool and we spun the wool and it was super fun. But of course, there were only four spinning wheels. So Christie made this for everybody to take home. It's a hand spinner, oh, I'm supposed to address you. So it's a hand spinner that instead of a spinning wheel, you spin it like this and then when you're done, you wrap it around. And I'm not ashamed to say I took it home and I spun my cat's hair. And it works, look at this yard. So, Mayor, since I was supposed to talk to you, the next class, please, come, invite everybody, it's gonna be so fun. It's a swag that we're making, I made one two years ago, it's only $30. Do you know how much Mount Vernon charges? Like $2.50, $300, ridiculous. So, first Sunday of December, December 7th, $30, make a swag, it's easy, it's beautiful, so much fun. And we get to make a mess, so. But anyways, I just, and next time we do this, you know, come, you can do your dogs, I'm probably not a cat person, or dog person, but anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there anyone else signed up to speak?
That's it, sir.
All right, all right. Next on our agenda is our mayoral and council comments. Councilwoman Peterson, you have any remarks for tonight?
I do not.
Okay. Councilman Pete, you have any remarks for tonight?
Oh, yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I just want to say, you know, it's always about the events with me, right? So we've been having some fabulous events, I'm not going to speak on two of the events, but I had a great time, one of them, but I will name them, the Pink and Purple and the Men's International Event, great events, guys, I had a great time, a lot of useful information out of those two events. The, I'm looking forward to seeing everyone this weekend, Saturday, 10 o'clock down here for our holiday parade, you know, I'm big on the events. If you haven't downloaded the Dumfries Citizens Connect app, down, pull out your phone, go to the App Store, download the Dumfries Citizens Connect app, that will get you engaged and notified of, in the notifications tab of everything that we have going on here from the town. We as a council wanted to bridge the informational gap between the, our building and our government and the citizens and surrounding communities, so we created the GoGov app, the Dumfries Citizens Connect app. And that, like I said, when that information comes out from our side of the fence, you guys get it directly to your phone instead of us trying to chase you around with a flyer. Additionally, moving pages, I had a chance to get back over to the EB Drive, Town Manager, I will get with you on that with some, I got some additional pictures that I could share, not for sure. And then hopefully, we can see where we at with the boundary lines of Prince William County and the town and see if we can work together to make it, make it a little easier over there, but I'll get those pictures to you additionally. Mr. Mayor, that is all I have for comments this evening, thank you.
Councilman Young?
Oh, no comments, I'm sorry.
Okay, Councilman Fields?
No comments.
Oh, yes, okay. Chair Proton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Just want to remind everyone, it's the season for being thankful and reaching out. We've had a rough couple weeks with the proximity of DC, some of our neighbors have had some hard times, so we definitely have a lot to be thankful for, so chug on everybody and enjoy your holiday.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I just want to wish everyone
So, Mayor, since I was supposed to talk to you, the next class, please, come, invite everybody. It's gonna be so fun. It's a swag that we're making. I made one two years ago. It's only $30. Do you know much Mount Vernon charges? Like $250, $300, ridiculous. So, first Sunday of December, December 7, $30. Make a swag. It's easy, it's beautiful, so much fun. And we get to make a mess, so. But anyways, I just want to, and next time we do this, you know, come, you can do your dogs. Probably not a cat person or dog person, but anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Matt Clark, is there anyone else signed up to speak?
That's it, sir.
All right, all right. Next on our agenda is our mayoral and council comments. Councilman Peterson, you have any remarks for tonight?
I do not.
Okay. Councilman Pete, you have any remarks for tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I just want to say, you know, it's always about the events with me, right? So we've been having some fabulous events. I'm not going to speak on two of the events, but I had a great time, one of them, but I will name them, the Pink and Purple and the Men's International Event. Great events, guys. I had a great time, a lot of useful information out of those two events. I'm looking forward to seeing everyone this weekend, Saturday, 10 o'clock down here for our holiday parade. You know, I'm big on the events. If you haven't downloaded the Dumfries Citizens Connect app, pull out your phone, go to the App Store, download the Dumfries Citizens Connect app. That will get you engaged and notified in the notifications tab of everything that we have going on here from the town. We, as a council, wanted to bridge the informational gap between our building and our government and the citizens and surrounding communities. So we created the GoGov app, the Dumfries Citizens Connect app. And like I said, when that information comes out from our side of the fence, you guys get it directly to your phone instead of us trying to chase you around with a flyer. Additionally, moving pages, I had a chance to get back over to the EB Drive. Town manager, I will get with you on that with some, I got some additional pictures that I could share, not for sure. And then hopefully, we can see where we at with the boundary lines of Prince William County and the town and see if we can work together to make it a little easier over there. But I'll get those pictures to you additionally. Mr. Mayor, that is all I have for comments this evening. Thank you.
Councilman Yeh?
No comments from the city, sorry.
Okay. Councilman Phils?
No comments.
Oh, yes, okay. Chair Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Just want to remind everyone, it's the season for being thankful and reaching out. We've had a rough couple weeks with the proximity of DC. Some of our neighbors have had some hard times. So we definitely have a lot to be thankful for. So chug on everybody and enjoy your holiday.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I just want to wish everyone a great upcoming holiday season, and I hope to see you all this coming weekend as we kick off the holiday season with our holiday parade and our tree lighting. It'll be a good weekend for good weather and an opportunity to come out and fellowship with your neighbors. And I want to congratulate everyone from the Legacy Builders graduate cohort. You've made a choice to invest in yourselves, and that choice will follow you for the rest of your journey. And I hope you share that experience with others so that they can prepare to join the next cohort. This is what I want for Dumfries. I am happy to see residents taking ownership of their growth and stepping into leadership in their lives and in the community. And I hope that you will share that knowledge with those around you to encourage them to do the same because it is important empowerment. It's absolutely important. So keep up the great work and be sure to share that information with others. Thank you.
Yeah, good evening again, everyone. I talked to some of the momentum I think Dumfries is on a path for, because I think we're onto something special that's happening right now in the town of Dumfries. We've entered a season where the work we've been building towards with the policies this council has been passing and things we've been doing is something special. The planning, the partnerships, the strategic plan, the vision, it's starting to show some real results if you haven't been paying attention. I want to take a moment tonight to just acknowledge kind of how far we've come together. I think one of our biggest milestones that we shared with y'all over the last 30 days was, and I'm happy our financial partners are here, is we received our first ever AA bond rating. And that's a historical achievement for this town. That rating didn't just happen by chance. It happened because of, you know, all of our town staff and our manager, her team, their discipline. It happened because of the transparency and the shared commitment that we all have for a well-managed government. What that bond rating means to you and to us is that Dumfries is financially strong. It says that we pay our bills on time, that we can take on big projects and take responsibility for those big projects. For a town our size to stand in that category, you got to understand, as me, the vice mayor, some members of our team went up there, it was nothing short of transformational. And I just want to take a minute to pause and to just share what we've accomplished as a community and how far we've come. Second, I want to talk about, we've had, as you heard, some of our colleagues talk about, some remarkable civic engagement this month. Residents turned out in strong numbers for not only to see what the waterfront would look like, but to see a powerful, what we called a key exchange ceremony, where we took the keys to our waterfront development property. And so we not only took that as an opportunity to celebrate getting the keys, but we had a lot of civic engagement or people who were able to engage in the process. One of the things we took pride that, especially in our strategic plan and in all of our documents, is that civic engagement is one of our top priorities. And so to be able to continue to keep you engaged and to communicate with you in the process and to let your voice to guide all the decisions we make, I think we put as many opportunities out for you all to participate in the process as possible. And even when you walked into this building today, you saw opportunity to participate in the process and put stickies on little notes. So civic engagement helps us to bring new energy to the ideas and expectation. That's what I believe leadership looks like at the very best. Not just us up here making decisions, but a community who continues to shape its own future. So I want to spotlight everyone who continues to participate because your voices are going to help guide the next 20, 30, 40, 50 years into what happens on the waterfront, the main street, and all these small area plans that we have. So we can say that we hear you clearly. Of course, you heard, and I echo, thank the vice mayor also for her comments, this Legacy Builders session on wills, trusts, and insurance about empowering families. I mean, too many of us have seen the GoFundMes, the text messages of people passing around the hat and people, you know, we've heard stories, horror stories from the Princes and the Michael Jacksons and celebrities who had issues with wills and trusts. And so to have affordable plans for our people to put trust and wills in place, I mean, it's right, share that knowledge and that information because this doesn't get taught and talked and talked about in most of our communities. And so we really are going to continue to put forth that message so people can build and work hard to keep and to share what they built for their family. These kind of programs, believe it or not, they lift the community from the inside out, equipping people to really break cycles, generational cycles, secure futures, and really create that generational security and that legacy. We also are continuing to move forward with a lot of the things. Congratulations goes out to all the new staff, the retirement of our one treasurer, the welcome of our new treasurer, who I guess we'll see later on, to the accomplishments in the police department, from the K-9 to the chief graduating his leadership. We tip our hats to all of that. You know, across every department, I think the town manager has shown tremendous growth and momentum, right? You see the decorations is out, there's continued growth in the performance of all our numbers down in our DMV. And as I look in there, there's a renewed sense of pride and excitement everywhere I go. People are talking about what's going on in Dumfries. And I've traveled a lot of places over the last 30 days, and people are talking about what's happening in Dumfries. And I want y'all to know, they're looking at Dumfries now as a blueprint for small-town transformation. People are mapping out what we're doing here because of the work and the engagement. And so all of this reinforces what many of us have believed for years, that Dumfries is no longer to be overlooked, that we are growing, we're leading, and we're stepping into our identity with confidence. So tonight, I just simply want to end by just saying thank you to every resident, to all our staff, to our partners, to everyone who is helping us to shape what we have in our vision as a thriving Dumfries. Thank you. We appreciate it. When a community finds and knows and understands its purpose, progress becomes inevitable. And so over the last month, I mean, we're starting to see that. We're moving forward, we're moving together, and we're building the Dumfries that our children and grandchildren will all be proud of. I look forward to seeing everybody this Saturday at our holiday parade, right here at 9:00 to 10:00. We also, we have a full day on Saturday, the 22nd. So if you're marking your calendars, not only do we want to see you at the parade, but come help us pass out turkeys. The need was so big that we had just about 500 people sign up to get turkeys from us this year. And so that's, it was very overwhelming, but when there was a need and the government was shut down, people really needed those resources. And so we'll be passing those out at 2:00. So if you want to put on an apron and come pass out some turkeys, make sure you show up. And then we'll end the night by lighting our holiday lights out here, all our Christmas tree and all our lights, and we'll have a festive celebration. On Thursday, if you're around, make sure you come out and attend our business expo at the Rose at, what time is that time, Ms.? 6:00, 7:00? 6:00 or 7:00, the signs are out there, yeah. 6:00, 7:00. Make sure you just come out and attend that event and you be a part. If you wonder what you're missing, stay tuned and connect to all our social media, our Dumfries Citizen Connect app and online to see what all the events we have. With that, we will move on on our agenda. Next on our agenda is reports and presentation, and we will then have our financial advisors. Now, Davenport on the strategic plan of what we're doing with our finance. But first, we'll have our CFO.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Chair Pro Tim, members of Town Council and community. Tonight, you will receive a presentation from the town's financial advisors, Davenport and Company, which has served as independent financial advisors to the town since 2019. Davenport has assisted the town with financial reviews, financial policy development, budget strategies, strategic capital planning, and it was instrumental in helping the town achieve its inaugural credit rating with Moody's and S&amp;P Global Ratings. This evening, they will review the town's strategic plan of finance and proceed to let the town know what the next steps are. If the community is following, you can follow the presentation on page 21 of the packet. I now present Roland.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton. My name is Roland Kouch, and I'm with Davenport and Company in Richmond, Virginia. And I have to say, it's an honor to be here tonight. Mayor Wood, Vice Mayor Nixon, Chairman Pro Tim Miles, members of council. And thank you, Ms. Ennis, for the trust you put in Davenport as well. Really appreciate the opportunity to bring this good news to the town and really, you know, expand upon everything you've said, Mayor Wood, tonight. Tonight, we are at a historic point in the town's financial history and progress in terms of the town moving into this next, this decade in full. I'm here to present to you the strategic plan of finance, but really, what has culminated in this is all of the hard work that Town Council has done in terms of adopting financial policies, sticking to the finance plans, balancing its budgets, adopting structurally-balanced budgets, and really taking those steps in terms of well-managed government and true prudent financial management. With that, I'd like to, forget this right here, give you a little bit of background. And again, as Mr. Eaton said here, we've worked with the town since 2019. Mayor Wood and Town Council has put its trust in Davenport, and we've done what we like to think is working in the town's best interest and providing that financial advice to bring you towards this result today that we see. With respect to financial reviews and financial policies, with respect to refinancing for interest rate savings, always looking for the things that will put the town in strategically good financial position. Right now, what we are currently in the midst of, and we've been working towards this point, we're in the midst of assisting the town with the implementation of really the strategic plan of finance, that you'll have a public hearing on later in the meeting, and also have an ordinance to adopt to proceed forward with that. This plan of finance is going to permanently refinance some interim notes that the town has used, really to fund some equipment, but also the strategic land purchase along Quantico Creek, and also fund about $8 million of capital improvements on the Route 1 widening project. So that's part of this financing plan, the package that we're going to be talking about What, along the road, coming along the road that we, where we've gotten to today, is we have really, as part of this process, worked with the town, and the town really has come a long way in being able to, and we're proud to say, able to achieve those AA ratings that you had mentioned earlier. Right now, the town has two AA, we'll call AA minus and AA three ratings in that strong AA category from two of the major national credit rating agencies that are widely respected for their independent review of the finances of local governments throughout the Commonwealth and throughout the nation. As a result of the process and the evaluation by both Moody's ratings as well as S&amp;P, the town did receive the first ever credit ratings that you see here in October of 2025. Recently, as we're moving down this path, we just got those ratings affirmed for the bond issuance that I'm going to be speaking about tonight. So we do have that in hand as well. So part of the process, the strategic plan of finance, involved a dual-track approach. We wanted to make sure that we evaluated all financing options available to the town with respect to these, this plan of funding for the capital projects that we're talking about. That involved looking at option one, which was a direct bank loan, and then option two, which is a rated public sale. And that rated public sale is available to the town because of its strong credit ratings. So we have that option and avenue open to us at this point. Option one, you see direct bank loans, that's typically, without a rating, that's typically the most widely used alternative to the rated public sale. And you can see here through with respect to the advantages and disadvantages. Sometimes, when you look at that overall, the direct bank loans may or may not provide a more cost-effective form of funding, but generally speaking, when we look at the comparative public markets available to us in option two, with the type of credit ratings the town has, you're going to see the cost of funding impact there in terms of financing capital needs such as the needs we're considering tonight. Looking at this dual-track approach, Davenport, on behalf of the town, did undertake a request for proposals funding process to look at approximately funding about $14 million through the direct bank loan approach. We did this because we wanted to make sure we covered all of our bases. This was done in anticipation, this was done in anticipation of needing this funding this fall, but also we did this to dual-track it as long, in addition to obtaining the credit ratings we have for option two. So with respect to the direct bank loan process, you know, we submitted an RFP to the local, national, and regional banking community for an amount up to the $14 million number, which was approximately what we need. Looking at the security, it's still the same general obligation pledge we had always been talking about. And we asked for a 20 and a 25-year term, long-term financing, because these are long-term projects and long-term investments. Would like to generally comment that 20- and 25-year financings are somewhat on the rare side for banks, but sometimes we do get those opportunities. And you'll see tonight what the respective cost of funding would be for a 20- and 25-year financing from banking institutions. In late October, we received four proposals. And you can see here from Atlantic Union, Capital One Public Funding, Huntington Public Capital Corporation, and Webster Bank. So we did have four banks that were interested in providing proposals to the town, although not all the proposals met all of our structural requests and considerations. So what we've done here is we've summarized the two top proposals in terms of banking institutions. One bank, you can see here, Webster Bank, proposed a 20-year fixed rate. So they did offer you a 20-year fixed rate at an effective interest rate of about 4.28. Capital One provided a 25-year interest rate effectively at a 4.69. And you can see each one had some flexible call provisions in there, looking at the way they offered the ability to refinance that. So you could refinance those at a later date down the road based on the provisions that they proposed, as early as 2031 in terms of Webster Bank. But really, for the Capital One, we're looking more like 2033. So future, you know, future ability to refinance that was part of the consideration there. We wanted to also point out that Atlantic Union provided a 377 rate, but that was a 10-year interest rate only, and that had a bullet maturity. One of those things that we have seen, if you don't have credit ratings and you have to go to banks, sometimes you do get the ability to pay at a lower structure in terms of the bonds, but then you have to refinance in 10 years. So that really is one of those types of financings that if you don't have to use that, we don't really, we're not really fond of that because it does provide some interest rate risk and exposure, you know, down the road. So we sort of discounted that from the consideration at that point. So on the next page, this is option two, rated public sale. And this is based on the town's AA three, AA minus issuer credit ratings, and now bond ratings, because the bonds are now going to carry the same bond ratings there. What we've been working on and leading to the culmination of this is that those credit ratings, and when we do the analysis of that effective interest rates there, that we call the true interest cost, those rates, when we saw on the bank side, were in the mid-fours. You know, when we look at the public issuance side, based on market conditions as of October 31st, when we did print this book, now that's going to change a little bit until we lock those in, but those rates are in the range of about 371 for 20 years and about 398 for 25 years. So we're talking about 4% effective interest rates or less for 25-year, and then 20-year less, so definitely it's going to be under 4%. Now, what we also wanted to point out is you still have the ability to refinance that in about 10 years. So there's the ability to take advantage down the road for future interest rate savings. So this still has a flexible ability to prepay and call those at a later date. So putting this all together, we wanted to provide a side-by-side comparison when you factored in all the costs, legal costs and the rating costs and everything, putting it all together and coming up, what is the ultimate all-in cost of funds? And what we're seeing here is that with option one, which is a direct bank for web, direct- And what we're seeing here is that with option one, which is a direct bank for web, direct bank loan with Webster Bank for 20 years versus a rated public offering for 20 years, you can see that we're roughly borrowing about the same amount of dollars, but the interest rates under the public issuance are that much better when you compare the effective interest rates and the all-in costs. And that's due to the ability to hit the public markets with the double A three and double A minus credit rating. So that's the power of the credit rating there that, and that's the power of being a well-managed government and achieving these kinds of significant, we'll call, results in terms of, of processes and evaluation and credit. Now, option, the option one for the 25-year loan, you could see is again, 4.69 from Capital One, but if we look at the public issuance, it's roughly about 4%. That's going to change a little bit in that up until we get there, but that's where we stand in terms of the cost of funding and you could see the ability in terms of the savings there as well. Now, looking at the bank options and the public rated options, when you distill all this down, the rated public markets opportunity really saves the town upwards of a million to 1.6 million in interest cost over the life of the financing. If you're doing a 20-year, it's about 1 million, if you're doing a 25-year, it's about 1.6 This page, just want to give you a highlight of where we are looking at in terms of interest rate trends. I think that the big picture here is we're still, even though we're not at the lowest of the lows during the pandemic timeframe, we're still in a, what we call a very attractive borrowing market. Anytime you can get in the 4% range, we always talked about that as being the benchmark kind of in that range for low fours is the range for good cost of funds at a very competitive basis. That's from a historical perspective. Now, of course, there've been times where it's been a lot lower than that, but those were due to unforeseen or really unique one-time circumstances such as a financial crisis in 2008 or also the, the pandemic recently a few years ago. But notwithstanding those couple of series of events, the 4% range is a very attractive place to do your financing today. So where does that leave us in terms of a recommendation and next steps? We recommend that the town move forward with the public issuance of the 2025 bonds, the public market option. That takes advantage of the cost of funding enabled through the double A three, double A minus credit ratings, based on market conditions as of 1031 and even today, there's, they're providing the lowest cost of funding amongst all the financing options you've looked at here. That cost of funding will be fixed for the life of the transaction, so you don't have to worry about it ever changing. It would change if you want to refinance and we can refinance at lower rates, that's the, the only way that it would potentially change at that point. And then you do have a prepayment flexibility to take advantage of that at a later date. So the next steps, we're here tonight at the town council, we're going to hold your public, your public hearing, consideration of the ordinance and Dan Siegel's here to talk a little bit about the ordinance, if there are any questions on that. And once that's adopted, then we really are in, in position to issue the offering document and post the offering document to the investment community. Effectively, that's planned for tomorrow. It's going to carry the ratings of the town and we're going to schedule that bond sale on December 3rd. So that, then once we have that bond sale, that's where the underwriting community and the investor community will have the chance to bid on the town's bonds and the way that's selected, the way the underwriters selected is the whoever provides the lowest cost of funding is going to be the winning bidder of the town's bonds. Then, once that occurs on December 12th, we're then going to, I'm sorry, December 3rd, we're then going to move to about December 17th, which would be the closing and funding of the, the bond transaction. At that point, you will have the money in the bank invested until you need to draw it down.
So I have a quick question of clarity, because it sounds like two different things. You said the rate is already fixed and the terms is already fixed, but we also go into the public insurance bond market and we're trying to get the lowest rate. So it sounds like you say it one thing, but then you said another thing. So I just, you know, clarify that. So on the public insurance, we already determined what we're going to pay and everybody is bidding on what we say we want to pay?
Well, that, this is just a market representation of where it stands today. Then that will float, that will change a little bit until we get to the bond sale date on December 3rd. But what's fixed is once those bonds are sold, you know, once we do that structure and the bonds are sold on December 3rd, that rate will not change for the life of the issue. That's what I mean by it's a fixed rate for the life of the issue. Some of the bank loans, like that Atlantic Union Bank, that might be a, a payment structure over a long period of time, but in year 10, they're going to change the rate, the rate's going to change on you. This transaction, well, once it's set in place, and that's December 3rd, will be fixed for the life of the transaction, so it will never change beyond that. Councilman Young.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A quick question, when this was pulled in, you said October 31st, how much have that changed since that time period to now?
That number is probably about 3.98, it's about 4.02 today. So it changed a little bit. Now, that number, those numbers move up and down every day, just a little, you know, they've been moving a little bit ever since then, but they were scheduled to be locked in on December 3rd, which is the bond sale.
So your anticipation is that it will go up even further?
It's hard to predict. I mean, it's, you know, if I could, if I could make that prediction, I would, I would be, you know, probably vacationing on an island somewhere, but, you know, we don't, we don't think that the rates, I mean, if the general sort of guidance from the Fed is that rates are, you know, they're probably going to hold them steady and through the end of the year in terms of their rate reductions, but they have been telegraphing future rate decreases over time. So I think all things being equal, you know, absent a catastrophic situation in the world, that rate should stay fairly stable until we get to that time.
Thank you, sir.
Hold the ships off in Venezuela, that's what you're saying. Vice Mayor.
Thank you for presenting this information. It helps to put into perspective that, that we have a plan that ensures our critical infrastructure can be funded, funded without burdening our residents, and that's really important. And it also helps to show that our new rating confirms that we are disciplined and forward-looking, and that's also very important, and it's important that our residents can see that we are being fiscally responsible. So thank you for presenting this in a digestible format, because that's also equally important. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is a presentation or introduction to our intern town treasurer, town manager.
Mayor Wood, I would like to ask Mr. Garland Williams to come up. I believe Curtis, Curtis would like to introduce himself.
Okay.
Do that first.
Thank you very much.
Good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Chair Pro Tim, members of town council and community. Tonight, I have the pleasure of introducing Entram Town Treasurer Garland Rick Miller, Jr. Mr. Miller has been a dedicated, yep.
Permanent.
Permanent.
Yeah.
Permanent Treasurer. Mr. Miller has been a dedicated public servant and comes to the town after holding positions as a regional planner, research analyst, economic developer, budget manager, director of finance, deputy chief financial officer. He holds a masters of business administration from Avert University and a bachelor's of arts in economics from the College of William and Mary. He joins the town a few weeks ago and is already making a, a positive impact on the town and staff. At this time, I would turn it over to, to him to make a more personable introduction. Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton. Thank you, Mr. Eaton. Like to take an opportunity, my wife, if she would stand, I will embarrass her at this point, but my wife, Tanya Miller, is here accompanying me. We have been married 31 years, we have three children. Ben is our oldest, he currently lives in New York City. We have twins. Our daughter Caroline lives in Manassas, our son Adam lives in Fredericksburg. We moved to the Fredericksburg community about two years ago. You know, we, I'm again delighted, I'm honored to be able to become the treasurer for the town of Dumfries. It's my pleasure to serve the town council, to serve the staff, the businesses of this community, and most importantly, the citizens of this community. So I just want to take the opportunity to, to say thank you for this, for the role, and it is an honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we want to swear a man? Okay, would you come back up? We're going to officially swear you in. Stand, come to the front. Thank you all for being a part of this process. For those who don't know, our former treasurer has retired, went home and wanted to take care of family responsibilities. She retired after serving us. She came in and helped us build our DMV Select as well as our customer service center. She's been part of, of collecting all the revenues and being diligent. She's been one of the, the brightest faces and brightest smiles that this town has had, and so she will be deeply missed, but we're happy for the new addition. And so now we will do the formalities.
Do you want your wife to come up?
Want your wife to stand next to you while you do this?
Come on, Tanya, come on. I'm going to make you part of it. Are you ready, sir? Please raise your right hand and I'm going to repeat after me. Aye.
Aye. Garland Miller, Jr.
Desolately swear.
Desolately swear.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Con- And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Incummit upon me.
Incummit upon me.
As town treasurer.
As town treasurer.
For the town of Dumfries.
For the town of Dumfries.
According to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
All right, welcome aboard. We'll have our chief come up now and introduce our K-9 Reaper for the town. Chief, I don't know, Reaper, come on, where's Reaper? Yeah, Reaper's going to speak and introduce.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Chair Pro Tim and Town Council. I am here to introduce the newest member of the Dumfries Police Department, K-9 Reaper. And I will let Corporal Salarte tell you a little bit about Reaper as well as the training and the stuff that he's trained on as well as her as well.
Hi, I'm Corporal Salarte. This is K-9 Reaper. We were at school for six weeks together.
Get to the mic, please.
He's an apprehension and narcotic dog and we're pretty excited to be the K-9 team for the town. Does anybody have any questions about him?
I think the public just wanted to see, it looked a little shy on television. Yes, he had something he wanted to say. Well, y'all give Reaper a round of applause. Welcome Reaper to the K-9 force. All right. All right, next on the agenda is our consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Okay, it's been motioned and second, any discussion? All right, seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, please do call for the question.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pete?
Yes.
Councilmember Fields?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Chair Pro Tim Miles?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nickerson?
Yes.
Mayor Wood?
Yes.
That motion's passed.
All right. So our first action item is a public hearing to amend and re codifying chapter 26, article six, section 26 through 170, through section 26, 179 on spot blight. Madam Attorney, our floor is now yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Madam Vice Mayor. We have one ordinance for public hearing tonight. It is an amendment to an existing regulation and it's proposed as part of the comprehensive review of the town code, which has been undertaken to ensure that the code is up to date with the state law and the current needs and practices of the town. I will provide a brief overview of the amendments and answer any questions that you may have about them. The ordinance amending chapter 26, article five, section 26 dash 170 through 179 pertains to spot blight. As previously indicated, it amends existing town code provisions. At section 26 dash 170, the amendment puts the public on notice and makes clear that the town's remedies for correcting or removing blight are in addition to and not to substitute the remedies to correct blight that are authorized in the state code. At section 26, 173, the amendment brings the town code into compliance with state law regarding the mandatory form of notice for violations, notices of violations to the owner. In section 26 dash 174, the amendments also bring the town code into compliance with state law and there's also some wordsmithing. At sections 26, 175 and 26, 176, the amendments also constitute wordsmithing. At section 26 dash 177, the amendments conform the provisions to state law and makes it clear the maximum extent to which interest can be imposed if a lien is authorized for the collection of expenditures that were utilized to correct blighted property. And finally, at a section 26 dash 179, the amendment eliminates redundancy. In, in total, this ordinance will bring our code into compliance with state law and promote efficient and effective government, and for these reasons, I recommend adoptions. That concludes my prepared remarks. I'm happy to answer your questions.
Okay, council, any questions on the staff report? Okay, seeing no questions on the staff report, we will now open up the public comment hearing second. Madam Clerk, did anyone sign up to speak on this topic?
No, sir.
All right, seeing no one signed up for the public comment on the public hearing, I will now close the public hearing. Okay, council, is there any more comments or remarks on it? I think that, um, you know, it's, it's great to put this in place, Madam Attorney, and to get this done. A thriving community is, is, is one that is well-maintained, and so this kind of reinforces our commitment to clean, safe and beautiful streets.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion of approval of the ordinance amending and codifying chapter 26, article six, excuse me, section 26, 170 through section 26, 179.
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned and properly second. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please do call for the question.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pete?
Yes.
Councilmember Fields?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Chair Pro Tim Miles?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nickerson?
Yes.
Mayor Wood?
Yes.
All right, next is a public hearing for consideration of an ordinance authorized in the insurance and sale of our geo generational obligation and refunding bonds of the town of Dumfries, providing the form of details and payment thereof. We'll have Davenport, please present the report.
That's right, Mr. Mayor, Dan Siegel from Sanz Anderson, and I have my colleague Stephen Forbes with me as well. You have the ordinance before you. I won't go through too much detail because I think, I think Mr. Cooch did a great job of explaining.
I think Mr. Cooch did a great job of explaining, really, what a great shape you're in from a financial standpoint. This ordinance provides for the permanent financing of the 2023 A bonds that you had that were for land acquisition of about $5,250 in principal amount. So we're going to refund and permanently finance that. That was done as a bond anticipation note. And then we're going to permanently finance the approximately $8 million that's going to be used for these other capital projects, the utility work we're doing on Route 1, Phase 1, to bring those utilities underground. The ordinance provides that you're going to, because of the rating that you have, you're now able to do this competitive sale because you're a really strong rated community, which is just remarkable to come out of the box first time and come up with double A rating. So congratulations on that. So this provides for a competitive sale on December 3rd. Davenport will be coordinating all that and will get sort of the rates. You'll have this online bidding process that will give you these rates, which all of you would be invited to see on screen on that day. And you'll see and you'll get the lowest rate of what you're, from an online standpoint. So I can go through, Mr. Mayor, as much of the detail of this as you'd like. You just let me know, and otherwise I'll sort of summarize more, if that's, if you prefer.
The big thing is, if we can go through and just remind the council and the public why it's important for us to refinance that 2023 bond, what's happening right now and why it's important that we refinancing? Because I think that the insurance on the note is due. Is there on demand?
Right.
So I mean, listen, I know that the pressure was on, on that bond. So I just, just a refresher for us all here on why that $5 million bond needs to be refinanced permanently.
Yeah, we, at that time, we had really issued it in an interim because we didn't know what, how we would do the permanent financing. And really, we weren't a rated community at that time. That we were sort of, from a town standpoint, you were in transition. And so this, you were waiting till you got to this point. And with the financial management you've had and the stewardship, you're now in such a good position to do this. So otherwise, you'd have to pay that off in full pretty soon. So it's good to permanently finance it and get it out of the way. Otherwise, so the total amount you're, from a hearing standpoint, is up to $14,750. We really predict, and you've seen in the draft preliminary official statement you have, that it will be somewhere around $13,900, I think. So just under. $13,900, just under $14 million when it's finally priced. We're issuing this under the Public Finance Act. So this public hearing will be all that you need to do at this point. And it's been properly advertised. Ms. Lucas helped us out a lot with that. This will be done, again, as a public competitive sale. So you get the guaranteed lowest price in the market at that time. We have this set up so that you have a not-to-exceed-interest rate, so it can't get but so high. But we don't think any, as Mr. Cooch said, we probably are in the low fours or under rates when that happens. Otherwise, this is a general obligation of the town, so the full faith and credit of the town. And because of your, again, that high rating, that's worth a lot in the market. And so that's what you're pledging, is your full faith and credit. There's no other security. So you're not putting up any building or anything like that. It's just your promise to pay is worth that in the market. And I think that's the basic structure of it. And again, unless anybody has any particular questions.
Counsel, any questions on the report? Public, all right, seeing none, we will go to a public hearing. Madam Clerk, is there anyone signed up to speak on the public hearing of these bonds? Questions, is there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. With that said, I will now close the public comment, public hearing section. It's now closed. All right. Any Chair Pro Tim questions, comments?
Yes, sir, I'd actually like to make a motion to approve the ordinance authorizing the issuance of the sale of general. Oh, I'm wrong. Am I right? Okay. Town obligation and refunding bonds of the town of Dumfries, providing for the form details of payments thereof.
Second, that motion, Mr. Mayor.
All right, it's been properly motioned and second. Any discussion? I just want to say, this is, you know, I don't know, people watching or whatever, people here, this is very historic for us, what's happening right here. I don't want y'all to take it lightly. That's why I'm trying to take it a pause right here. Because this is, we're approaching the market with our AA bond rating for the first time, which reflects the years of discipline to get us there. Because if you know where we were in 2019 when Davenport came aboard to where we are now, that's years of disciplined financial policy to get there. One of the promises that we made, and I think Vice Mayor laughed at me when we went to the bond market, is I told them we don't borrow to fill potholes. I told them, I say, we're not borrowing to build potholes. We're borrowing to build an infrastructure that's going to last Dumfries for a minimum of 50 to 100 years. And so when you look at what this project is going to do for us, we're using smart financing to reduce long-term costs. We saw an example, $900,000 on one to almost over a million on another in cost savings to this community. This bond rating, the cost savings alone is already over $1 million, and we haven't even went to the market yet. And so this is a very historic moment. So it's another example how we're practicing responsible government and still moving boldly into the future. We're borrowing smart, we're building smart, and we're letting every dollar work for the people of Dumfries. So Vice Mayor.
I just want to piggyback off of that. You're absolutely right. This is financial stewardship. This is not us preparing for overspending. This is really us building responsible tools that keep Dumfries growing in the smart way. This is, this is the right thing for us. This is us being smart and physically responsible, like I said earlier. This is great, Dumfries. This is a moment to celebrate.
Madam Clerk, call for the question.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pete?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Fields?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Chair Pro Tim Miles?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nickerson?
Yes.
Mayor Wood?
Yes.
That motion has passed.
All right, next, a consideration of a motion to amend previously adopted to eliminate a directive. Chair Pro Tim?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this motion is actually in regards to Historic Dumfries. I'm going to pivot a little bit from the direction we took this evening. I know we've been talking about, a lot about how Dumfries has grown and about what's to come for the future. Over the last few weeks, we've had opportunities to have community conversations with members of the community. We've had a special work session regarding this, and I think we have an opportunity here to reaffirm one of our longstanding relationships with a local nonprofit, which would be Historic Dumfries. So right now, I would like to make a motion to amend a previously adopted motion to eliminate the directive authorizing the town manager to take all steps necessary to fully implement regarding Historic Dumfries.
Second.
You get your second?
Yeah, well.
Oh, I'm asking the clerk. All right, so it's been motioned and properly second. All right, council, any discussion on the motion? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So I actually have a couple of questions for the town attorney. But before I ask my questions to the town attorney, I want to make it very clear that I cannot support rescinding this directive. If we undo it, the town will be right back in the position we were before this process started. We will not have a legally binding franchise agreement. We will not have any enforceable protections. And that's not in the best entry, in interest of the town of Dumfries or our residents. This is not about personalities. This is about governance. The truth is, practices we have experienced from HDVI have been inconsistent, have not aligned with the standards we expect from any partner. The operations have not paralleled the level of openness, fairness, or community access to every other park in our town provides. For years, residents renting the park under HDVI have faced significantly higher rates than those at any other town facility, which creates inequity, and inequity is unacceptable. And our responsibility is to protect all residents, not preserve arrangements that lack transparency. So my goal is simple. I want the legal facts on the record, and I want the community to understand clearly what is at stake if this directive is rescinded. And with that said, town attorney, I just want to ask you a couple of questions about where we are headed this evening. If the existing agreement is not valid and we rescind the directive and HDVI fails to abide by any terms, can the town sue for breach of contract? Can you answer the yes or no, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, sir.
Got the directive question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, can the town attorney answer yes or no, please?
No.
No, thank you. My next question is, can you please direct the town attorney to answer? In your legal opinion, is any term in the existing franchise agreement legally enforceable?
In my opinion, no.
And my last question is, if HDVI fails to perform services as expected under the franchise agreement, does the town have any legal resources? Recourse, I'm sorry, any legal recourse?
Again, no.
Thank you, sir, I yield.
Okay, Councilman Fields?
Adding to what Chair Pro Tim has said about the community talks and discussions that we've had, I want to personally say I appreciate those talks and discussions that we've had with many of you all. I thank you for the engagement. I thank you for the attention, and I listen. And we have an opportunity to make things right and listen to you all collectively and from y'all to us individually, and try to make things right. So that's all I got to say.
Councilman Pete?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Out of respect to Historical Dumfries, right? From the time that we've given the directive for the town manager till today, I think, I can kind of say I actually like the space that we're in right now. Some of the remodeling that has been done, some of the upgrades that has been done, and to put us in a better position. Again, this is of putting us in a better position. You know, from the hole in the ground to, I mean, from the hole in the bathroom to now it's fixed, where at first it was welding in, and now that's fixed to, so a lot of nice upgrades that were presented in our last council meeting. I'm not going to go into too many details of that. That's in our last council meeting. But I want to say to all the citizens, since we've given the directive to the town manager, I kind of like the space that we're in and working with them now. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Young?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also too have a question for Madam Attorney. Madam Attorney, is there any way possible that, from my understanding of the current ordinance at the same place right now, the validity of it was that it was invalid, correct? Is there any way possible that we can draft a new ordinance with both HDVI and the town to come to an agreement that way to make it legal?
Yes, a new ordinance can be prepared, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, do you think we can explore those options?
Yeah, right now, there's a, there's a motion on the floor, and there's a second. So we're just in debate and discussion. And once we call for that question, we can move forward.
Thanks, sir.
My comments, it's kind of steadfast. It's, bless you. It's the, kind of the same notion as I was on. We've, you know, from a policymaker's standpoint and from a relational standpoint, you know, how we do things matters in the conversation and the openness. Just because you find out something, a document was incorrect for 40 years, you don't dissolve 40 years of history and 40 years of relationship on a single swipe. I think these type of conversations, to be able to sit down, and I applaud Historic Dumfries for wanting to bring up the franchise agreement time and time again and bring it to the council meeting and show their willingness to want to come in and make sure that the town did certain things and be a part of certain things. And so as Councilman Young, I think it's a great opportunity to actually reshape and to solidify and make valid a document that some of the peoples who's, who come before us on this dais, who actually put together, and as far as the historical context on why they put it together and why, and to bring back the spirit of why that relationship was established, and to be able to build a solid foundation as we move forward and to continue to do both. So I think it's about, you know, history matters, and so destruction. So how do, how do we honor the history and create the structure and the foundation? I think this is an opportunity not to, not to build bridges. You know, one of the pledges I made when this community elected me in 2018 as the mayor, that I was going to be a bridge builder. We didn't, we didn't have the relationships that we had. And so I understand that those relationships matter, and I will continue to be that bridge builder. And so to me, it's always been about sitting down, having a conversation, and making the documents right. And so seeing that there are no more comments or discussion, I will ask the clerk to repeat the motion in the second and then to call for the question. Hold on one second. Madam Town Manager?
Mayor Wood, I just want to be clear what the council is voting on. I want to know if it's the reconsideration or is it the amendment that Councilmember Young had spoke of?
So it's a motion. She's going to repeat the motion on the floor. So, you know, the motion on the floor is the one that Chair Pro Tim made.
I just wanted clarity, thank you.
Yeah.
So the motion on the floor is the motion to amend the previously adopted motion to eliminate the directive authorizing the town manager to take the necessary steps to fully implement regarding Historic Dumfries. Motioned by Chair Pro Tim Miles, seconded by Councilman Fields. Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pete?
No.
Councilmember Fields?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Chair Pro Tim Miles?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nickerson?
No.
Mayor Wood?
Yes.
That motion has passed.
Councilman Young, did you have something else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we at least open the floor up for conversation, for a new ordinance to be in place for HDVI and the town of Dumfries, since the previous, since the current ordinance has been in question for some time.
Madam Attorney?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the question that was asked was pretty general and broad in nature. There are specific procedures that the state law requires with respect to franchise agreements. We would have to go through that entire process for an ordinance. So it's not a matter of substituting a valid agreement for a currently invalid agreement. You have to actually go through the process and do this the correct way.
All right. With that said, we will move on to our closed session. No?
No.
Oh, that's right, I got one more. We have one, one other item, which was the Okay. Okay, there was consider, consideration.
For the
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Before we move on, he needs to take his motion off the floor. It didn't get a second, but you didn't say that. He did make a motion.
Okay. So was there a second? There was no second for the motion, so the motion is dead?
Thank you.
All right, so it's stated that it's dead. Okay. All right. Final action item is consideration of adding a position to the town's 2026 legislative agenda opposing the legalization, for us taking a position to oppose legalization. taking a position to oppose legalization of neighborhood slot machines, also referred to as skill gains or grade gains, in response to a formal request that we got from Churchill Downs Group, the operator of the Rose Gaming Resort here in Dumfries. I removed this because, you know, I checked, and I think I had some remarks here. I'll just read my remarks. You know, we got a letter from Churchill Downs. What you see in a lot of these gas stations, these convenience stores and stuff, are these games that are unregulated, they're untaxed. And so there is statewide policy that's been considered for the last, since the pandemic, right, when we had the previous governor up there. One of the things I look at as, as mayor here is the responsibility to, to make decisions that, that really are going to strengthen our community, to support our economic partners, and to preserve our ability to deliver long-term results for our residents. So over the past several weeks, I took the liberty, as this was coming up, and I spoke directly to our state delegation, our policymakers, about the upcoming discussions that they're going to have in Richmond about this. We also talked about this last year, and we did not put this in our legislative agenda at all last year. We chose to stay out, just like we chose to stay out the casino conversation that was happening in Tyson's Corner. We said, as Councilman Fields say, we keep Dumfries business in Dumfries. It's not our fight. The guidance that has been clear and consistent over the last couple of years on this legislation is that this is not a fight that the town of Dumfries needs to engage in. Entering into a highly complex and deeply divided statewide debate would not advance our local priorities that we put in our legislative agenda, and it could weaken some of the strong relationships that we rely on to secure major investments for our town. Remember, I said relationships matter. Our focus remains exactly where it should be: growing Dumfries economy, expanding our capacity as a destination community, and bringing more people here to eat, to sleep, and to play. Now, I want to say this: The Rose has been a transformational partner in that effort. They've already contributed millions of dollars in revenue, hundreds of jobs in this community, and they helped us build momentum for the Main Street revitalization that we're looking at, the waterfront development, and major infrastructure improvements. The best way for us to support The Rose and all of our economic partners is for us to stay aligned in our relationships with our legislative delegation, to maintain our influence as legislators in Richmond, and to keep our political capital focused on the big wins for the things that we need to move Dumfries forward. By protecting those relationships, we ensure that our priorities from Main Street to waterfront, to transportation funding, to tourism development, that they remain front and center for us in our conversations that matter most to the town of Dumfries. And I think Dumfries is committed to those partnerships, those progress, and practical leaderships. And so we continue to build a thriving community, more welcoming for our visitors, and everything for the Rose and the town has to offer. That's where I believe our energy needs to be and where it should stay, which is why I cannot support adding this to our legislative agenda. So I just want to take that off, and so we can take that as a solid motion to see where we stand as a body. With that, is there any other discussion on it?
Chair Protem?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have a, I have a question first. Procedurally, with permission, we like to direct towards the Town Attorney, and then after that, I may make a motion dependent on her response. Procedurally, if you table a motion, does it just lay there? Is it something that we have to take up later on, or is it something that just lays on the table until somebody possibly brings it back up?
It depends on how it's, how it's framed. So generally, if you table something, it dies.
Okay.
Lay it on the, you can lay it on the table for a specific period of time as well.
Okay. So with that, with respect to the fact that this is a state issue, it's going to be legislated in the General Assembly, I am going to make a motion that we not take any position on this, and we table this item.
I second that motion.
Okay, second. Councilman Pete, did you have a discussion? Okay. All right. So what's the motion on the floor? To just table it. Okay. Any other discussion on the motion that's on the floor? All right. Madam Clerk, please call for the question.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pete?
Yes.
Councilmember Fields?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Chair Protem Miles?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nickerson?
Yes.
Mayor Wood?
Yes.
And motion has passed.
All right. Now, we will move to our closed session. The town of Dumfries desires to go into closed session, meeting pursuant to 2.2-3711 Alpha 1A4 and Alpha 8 of the Virginia Code, to discuss personnel matters, to consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters, to protect the privacy of individuals, and personnel matters not related to public business matters. And we are allowed to do that by state law, and we will do it by resolution. And so I do this in the form of a motion.
Second.
Okay. It's been motion and second. Any discussion? All right. Madam Clerk, please call for the question.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pete?
Yes.
Councilmember Fields?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Chair Protem Miles?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nickerson?
Yes.
Mayor Wood?
Yes.
We are now in closed session.
All right. We'll meet back there at 8:40. Give everybody a chance to go.
I make a motion in accordance with the provisions of the Freedom of Information Act 2.2-3712, Dakota, Virginia, to the best of each member's knowledge that only public business matters lawfully exempt from the open meeting were heard and discussed or considered and the only public business matters that were identified in the motion by which we went into closed session.
Second.
All right, it's been motion and second, any discussion?
All right, I see no discussion. Madam Clerk, please do call for the question.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pete?
Yes.
Councilmember Fields?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Chair Bo Samaus?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Mayor Wood?
Yes.
We're now back in open session.